A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So you can go ahead and do the minutes and then we'll do the public hearing.
Okay. Alright. Did everybody read last month's minutes?
Yes.
I'll make the motion with the last month's minutes.
Would you mind if I...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On invitation.
Okay, so that's out.
Okay, so now you gotta tell them that we're closing the regular meeting to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Is this your first time?
It's my second time.
Wait, we're having a public hearing?
Yeah, okay, now we close our regular meeting for public meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
The public hearing, it is the additional appropriations that we went over last month. And since I don't do these very often, I forgot that we have to have a public hearing. So I advertised it in the paper within the ten days. And so now we just gotta vote on this additional appropriations that we voted on last month. And it is for, to add money to the deputy clerk's salary since I have hired one and to add to the attorney's fees since we hired one since the beginning of the budget to hopefully be able to cover all the charges for the rest of the year.
I make a motion where you...
Well, the public hearing meetings, you need to invite the public to speak on the additional appropriation.
No. Does anybody have any questions?
Did we hire? So he's finally got help?
No, a deputy clerk.
Oh.
He, that's a deputy marshal.
I love that picture. I thought you said deputy marshal.
No.
I can wish.
Deputy clerk. Deputy clerk, the helper in my office.
Here, pass him out.
I haven't had one since last year.
When I had the dog.
I started it.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, so we can ask.
So then you can close the public hearing and vote on the additional appropriation as part of your regular meeting.
Okay, we're gonna close the...
Actually, I do a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Oh, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Now I'll take a motion to approve the appropriations.
Now.
I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now you're ready for the next one.
The inter-local agreement.
Do you want to talk or...
Basically, the inter-local agreement is that grant money that the county has given us for me to purchase some equipment and stuff like that. And I think it's like sixteen thousand or something like that. And basically what it says is whatever I purchase, I will report back to them while it's being spent on and so on and so forth. And it's just, you guys gotta agree to approve me to do all that. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
So, and I'll be getting like phasers, some equipment for the truck, some... Like, I can buy tires with it and stuff, which I want you to put tires on the Explorer, buy enough stuff to change the oils on the cars for the next almost year and a half. Stuff like that, just to kinda ease on my budget. And that's what that money's gonna do, just equipment and other stuff, little stuff like that. It's listed there, but the list is not the exact list, 'cause I turned in something else after whatever. But you guys just need to look through it and agree, and I just need you guys' approval.
If anybody wants to look at a copy of it, I have it right here. Is it in this? Now, that's how it should report. I emailed it to you, so if you don't have a copy, you don't have a copy.
Alright.
Well, I could look it up.
I did, I did look through it then. I did look through it, okay.
Yeah, so you just need a motion to approve the inter-local agreement.
Unless you want to have the board read it, make sure it's okay.
Or give more, more of a chance to schedule it. I didn't even think about emailing that to you, sorry.
Alright, you guys remain fiscally responsible for doing all the appropriate bidding and everything to spend, but...
Yeah, at first...
...the use of your opioids.
At first, he conned me into saying, "Yeah, that's fine," 'cause it wasn't gonna go through my office, and then he changed his mind.
No, but it wasn't me.
You didn't send a copy of that?
Yes, I did, okay.
And all that stuff...
I'll present it's fine.
The only thing you guys have to do is agree to it, and I'll do all the reporting to the county.
And I'll put a check.
And I've already submitted all the bids already, are ready for it, so it's all there. So, I just, I'll do the paperwork part of it, so.
Yep, so you just need a motion.
Okay, taking a motion to approve the inter-local agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright then, unfinished business. Update on paving project.
I'll teach you, young man.
Well, I think I'm gonna start from scratch.
Are you hot?
Yeah, I'm there. Okay, good. I think maybe what may have occurred is my client Peter, his company with Monty Holy may have started you down a path, just talked about community crossing, funding project for paving and how the program might work.
They did the phasers step.
They started doing that work.
Yep.
And then basically realized they were, that's not their niche. And so it's been handed over to us. So, just so you know, whether that explanation was never really given to you in terms of how it works, item number one, for communities with a population of less than ten thousand that you, it's a seventy-five twenty-five magic program. This means that the town has to put up twenty percent of the construction cost of the host project. In other words, if, if a project was estimated to be a hundred thousand, you'd have to put up twenty-five percent for twenty-five thousand dollars, it's a staple grant at seventy-five. It does not pay for the engineering services, though. On top of the construction is the engineering, and the engineering is predicated upon length of work that we have to do to put the plans and specs together and so forth. So that's, the engineering fees sometimes are byproduct after the streets have been decided based on budget. And that's kinda, I think, where we're at. MVH funds are a good source of local project cost, even restricted MVH funds. Local road and street fund is another source, but it funds that can be used as long as a town council approves, used via resolution such as rainy day, riverboat, ARPA available, and cumulative capital approval. So, that's how it works. And we're kind of at a crossroads. The call for projects, in terms of turning the application, started yesterday. And it goes through the end of the month, John, is that correct? So we've got between now and the end of the month to get paperwork put together and get it uploaded. The uploading process, as you know, is a little bit tedious because there has to be a town named person designated to do that, and they really expect it to come through you. But the reality is, some of it's kinda complex, and it doesn't always happen. So I think the goal tonight is to try to decide, A, what streets might be the priority, so we can work up cost estimates, but also make a decision as a council as to how much local money you think you might have to afford this. That's really bad in a nutshell. Now, going backward, previously we had applied for several streets, and we prepared plans and specifications for it. I think we've sent you a partial bill for that work, and it's been sitting there idle. But the fact remains, we did put it out for bid, you had won the bid. And you're under a very unfortunate circumstance here because Milestone seems to have a whole other market here. I think they have the asphalt plant, and they have the need to lay that asphalt. And you got one bid last time, and it was from them. And John did some checking today, and we're seeing compared to other places where there's competition in the bidding, they're about thirty to forty percent higher in the unit prices that we're seeing in other places. So, this time, I don't know if we can get around that unless there's other contractors with other sources of asphalt. Because if Milestone is the source of the asphalt and a contractor put it down, they kinda got a stranglehold on it. But we'll try our best, but that's an unfortunate position.
Is Kool-Aid one that does stuff like this, or are they not big enough?
They don't, I don't think they do.
Usually on a project, when they do a project that involves asphalt restoration, they'll hire Milestone, just like Indiana Earthworks did on the stormwater project here. So, it's kinda tough.
There's a company in Collinsville.
Okay. I'll make a note of that.
I cannot tell you now, it's been thirty years.
I'll look it up. I'll be glad to look it up.
It's either in Collinsville or Rushville.
So more I don't know if you've had a lot of experience with other communities in terms of advising them on if they wanna transfer funds over and commit them to this project, whether it's from rainy day to cum cap. I think it does require a resolution of the council to identify what, how much in the project that was...
Yeah, if you wanna officially appropriate a project, you gotta flag.
So I guess the first question is, do you guys as a council know what street or streets would be the priority? I keep hearing North Street.
That's not the more priority, it's East North Street.
East North Street.
And Main Street.
I think from the previous application, it was about nine hundred yards, 'cause it goes from twenty-seven to the town limits, east.
That's North Street.
Yeah, East North Street.
Okay.
There is a small West North Street, but it's not very...
But just so you guys know, there was a hiccup in the state map. Because when John goes in to plug in the figures and so forth for this into the application, he hits a point, let's just say on the eastern boundary, and then to the western boundary, is that correct?
What he does is, is I take North Street, I take all of North Street into consideration, then you have to start playing with the beginning and the end to bring it to the point where...
Our city limits end.
Yeah, right, and I've had it, I've dragged it in the past to a starting point like Old Miles, and it goes back out. We were, I mean, that was totally my, my error that day. And you were ill that day when they said, they caught it.
Well, I closed it too on Fridays, and they didn't send the email till three fifteen, I think, something like that.
But, that's why North Street didn't get funded.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so the issue also, we have, here, North Street is the definite priority.
Yes.
Two is Main Street, is everybody...
Yeah, Main Street.
Now, the issue on Main Street is this, one of the things that we met previously the day of the guys were meeting out front here is, community crossing only pays for work within the road right-of-way. So if we go outside that road right-of-way, some other source has to pick up the tab for it completely. The issue out here is if directly in front of Town Hall and so forth is an area that everybody thinks, let's try to get something hammered out. We talked about some additional drainage inlets that would have to be installed to make things work and drain accordingly. That's gonna add some costs. But the other is, you've got this slope coming off the garage doors of the fire department, and then you've got a dip that people, if they're going too fast, will bottom out through there, and they wanna correct that. Well, in order to correct it correctly, we have to move back outside of the right-of-way into the apron out here on the concrete. And that's one of the things that we met and talked about in terms of, okay, from this point to this point, we've gotta find another source. And I think you guys determine that you may have the money to cover that expense outside of that.
I've done some, I've done some figuring too, I've got numbers for you, so, when we get to that point.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. Storm drainage stuff within the right-of-way is, is an eligible expense. And work within the right-of-way, if there's an adjacent sidewalk, we can include that. I know we was talking about adding to some of the handicap parking. But I think, John, was there an issue with some of that as well?
Um, they wanted to extend it across the school next door and the additional parking up front, and then bring it back out. And that's probably, would require some drainage structures to pick up additional drainage, so.
Yeah, another problem with Main Street is blacktop is not fastened. There's two inches, it's not fastened to the blacktop underneath it.
Okay.
They found that out when they were using the air blower, the road actually just came up, yeah.
Yeah, we picked it up.
They cracked sealed it the last time they...
No, you have to dig it up.
Well, yeah, we'd mill it off, obviously, right? You had to mill it off.
I had two, two different scenarios for milling. Main Street's got some issues from years of just putting blacktop down. You've got some drainage structures up the street that are probably six inches below the surf, the asphalt surface that would need to be brought up. So, I don't know, it depends on how much money you're gonna have to allocate. Main Street was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and the last bid, I just looked at that. But that didn't include any drainage, that was just asphalt. We looked at milling an inch and a half off and putting an inch and a half back. And then, one of the other thoughts was to mill two and a half off to start to lower it, to get your curb line reveal back. And that, that was considered additional, and I think it, it added to the hundred and fifty-six. Another thirty-six thousand dollars, so, you know, that would bring it up to almost a hundred and ninety thousand, so.
Right.
So now I think we can try to engage in the discussion about local money so that we can start working the math backwards.
Yeah.
And I know things got a little bit tenuous in some of the emails we had back and forth, but it's kinda like chicken or the egg in this, money...
Yeah.
Priorities, so.
Well, my MVH has those issues, so I really don't want to use MVH money. MVH, the state board required us about, I think it was three years ago, to split our distribution, so half of it goes into my regular MVH and half of it goes into my restricted. While the DLGF, when they do the budget, they add those two amounts together, the state doesn't. My regular MVH is negative.
Swahili.
Because of having to split that. And it, with, that's what wages comes out of, insurance, gasoline. So it hasn't been able to catch up with itself. So I've reduced what I pay out of MVH as far down as I can reduce it. So I really don't want to use MVH, even though through the DGLF, if I apply for additional appropriations, they're gonna approve it. But then I'm gonna get deemed by the state board of accounts when they come to audit me. So, I have local road and streets. I'm Wayne Hudson, which is my rep from the DLGF. I always say that wrong.
DLGF.
Yeah, I get the L and the F mixed up. But, so the formula he gave me to kind of get a ballpark figure of what I would, we would get approved for additional appropriations, I come up with twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars out of the local road and streets. The ARPA, which I've already told Greg Ba- Ballmer about with Mark...
Mike.
Yeah, that we, we've already promised that to go to the street project. So that's twenty-one thousand, sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And then I've also done some figuring with my Edit, and I come up with sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars out of Edit. Now, the fire department, I did the formula that Wayne gave me for the fire department general fund, not their special equipment fund, just the general. And with the calculations he gave me, there's at least a hundred thousand dollars I can ask for in additional appropriations for the fire department.
Okay, so out of that fund would be the required apron work outside of the right-of-way then? Okay, so, without...
So the total of the three is a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's what my script...
Multiply that by four. Now, the question is, is that the sum total of your dollars available that has to also pay for engineering services, or...
That's the total.
That's the sum total.
Yeah. So you need to subtract your engineering services and then multiply it by four.
Okay, I think everybody understands that math. Alright, so with that, we'll go to work on working up estimates and seeing what we can do. And then, probably because of timing, we'll shoot emails out to everybody as quickly as we can. Now, that being said, whether your legal counsel then will direct you to any resolution that might need to be made in terms of applying for the additional appropriation perhaps, or using Edit money or so forth.
We've never had to do a resolution to use Edit money and the ARPA money. Like I said, I've already let client Peter know that to, when he did the report that he asked to do that, we promised that to the road project. So, does council want me to go ahead and do a, do a public hearing for August's meeting to do the additional appropriations for the local road and street?
John, is that, well, let's...
You'll be past the...
Well, I meant, yeah, I don't have a doubt that we'll get this. But if you want to do a special meeting, then I can get the ad, I can contact the plenum item, find out the earliest they can run the ad, and then schedule the meeting ten business days after that, if you wanna have a special meeting this month for it, that's...
So that would add to this and other?
No, that is the amount of local road and street that I gave Lou already. But that is, has to be in an additional appropriation, so there has to be a public hearing for it.
It has to be appropriated before you spend it.
Yes.
But that doesn't stop the process from going on.
Part of the application process is that you have to have a letter, a financial commitment letter stating where your twenty-five percent comes from that gets submitted with the application.
And that amount is.
Yep.
So I will email the plenum item, usually it's two days. So if I email them tomorrow, they should be able to have it in Saturday's paper. So it would be Monday, Monday through Friday next week, and Monday through Friday the next week before. It's gotta be ten business days excluding holidays and weekends.
So the earliest we can do is like the twenty-second?
Something like that.
Yeah.
They used to be able to put an ad within twenty-four hours, but they don't do that no more, it's usually two days. So if I send them an email tomorrow and ask them if they can publish it Friday, they'll email me back and let me know if they can do that or not. So I'll be able to find out tomorrow.
Why, why are we rushing it? Why are we calling a special meeting for it?
Because the application has to be turned in by July thirty-first.
But you don't send a check-in with the application?
Yeah, I know, but they just wanna be sure that, they want, like he said, there has to be a letter committing it, so.
You can take a verbal vote tonight, committing those specific funds and that total, which would allow you to sign the letter of another meeting about that.
That's what I said the first time.
I'm not getting you, sir.
So, we can, we can go with what I said the first time, and we'll have the public hearing with August's meeting just like we did the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay.
Well, that and the local road and streets.
So with that, I mean, motion?
Yeah, the council wants to entertain a motion to approve the letter of financial availability of the funds as discussed, that would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to do an attorney just... Word for word.
A letter of financial intent.
Sure.
Letter.
Okay, we got a motion, do we got a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also printed off an actual call for projects, talked about it. Kind of a guidance document as well as some frequently asked questions. So I don't know if there's available for everybody, but it's, it's pretty thorough in terms of what can be done, what can't be done, the dates, some of the things that we just had recapped earlier.
Thanks, sir.
More discussion about that, say? Okay then, no parking behind the fire station.
Did you get that redone?
I laid a copy in between you and Steve, and I laid a copy here between Lori and Cecil.
You talked about that.
'Cause, yes, Aubrey, or, we called you Aubrey all last meeting. Mara emailed that to me, but I, it wasn't soon enough for me to email it to you guys and have for you to look at it before the meeting. So I printed a couple of copies off so you could look at it, and it's the same as it was.
Yeah, since there were questions about some of the provisions in there, I clarified it by actually striking through things that are in your current ordinance from nineteen eighty-five that we wanna take out. Then the bold language is the new language that's being added. If it's in regular type, it's just what your current ordinance already says.
Do you wanna look at it?
It's that next page.
So the big addition is that within thirty feet of every intersection were prohibited by signage, yellow painted edging, or yellow painted curbs unless a different distance from the intersection is indicated by signage to the contrary. It clarifies that it's fifteen feet in fire hydrants, that is state statute. So we're just clarifying, it's not just right in front of the hydrant, it's fifteen feet. Deleted all the references to US twenty-seven, and then added a general clause that if the parking is prohibited by IC nine twenty-one sixteen five, then it's also prohibited here. That way you can enforce it as a little ordinance.
Can it, to help you clarify, be able to do that, so?
Yeah, in the penalty section, the penalties went up five dollars on each, from ten dollars to fifteen, twenty to twenty-five, and thirty to thirty-five, so that'll have to be published. Those are the only changes.
They were, last night, I mean, they were talking about not making that thirty feet, can they make it less, or does that happen?
Yeah, if there's a specific instance where only twenty feet is appropriate, just have the sign say twenty feet when you have it made. Yeah, if there's a specific instance where only twenty feet is appropriate, just have the sign say twenty feet when you have it made.
That's why the verbiage, that's why you have the verbiage, that way, cause we can make it last in our grade.
That's why it says like that.
Would you like this up? Oh.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, wasn't there something said, um, at one point about we can, we can change this to some degree?
Yeah, that's what they were. And that's why it says within thirty feet, so we can make our signage less than thirty feet.
Okay, but we can't just, yeah, that's one issue, we could make it less, but we couldn't make it. Right?
Right?
Okay.
Alright, okay. Alright.
I believe since you introduced this last month, it will just need to make a motion to accept the amendments before you vote on approval of it.
Okay.
On the number six, on the end of it, within fifteen feet of all fire hydrants and fire lanes. Would that be considered, the, front of the, the front apron and the back apron would be considered fire lanes or just no parking?
That's an entrance to the firehouse, that's twenty feet.
That's, yeah, that's different.
So it's twenty feet on each side of it.
And that's spelled out in that state statute that's referenced. That way, if those numbers ever change, yours is just relevant where the state has set that.
Now, we're not, didn't we decide we're not going to? We talked about blocking off the entire, the other side of the street, a main street, where nobody could park on the other side, on the south side. Did we decide, decide not to do that at this point?
I don't think it was even in there.
Oh, okay, I remember, we did discuss it.
Yeah, it was brought up at the meeting to make that.
Other than the regular regulations on the curbs and the fire hydrants and stuff, I would just keep it the way it is.
Yeah.
Um, because some of these streets, if you do that, no one's gonna have nowhere to park.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Um, so, that, that's, that's why I urge the ordinance to be so we can adjust, I was, cause if you didn't, then you'd have to strip them by street side.
And I've been asked about, it's probably not really grandfather isn't really the right word, but residents have asked me if there's anything that can be done since the new addition in the back was built on after the parking was established, if that holds any grounds as far as them not changing it, and no parking. Yeah, I know, I know, you're looking at me crazy, I'm just asking.
But I mean, it's been, it's been a fire station for.
Yeah, I know that, but that's, that back there is new.
Well, but still, that was part of the fire station back there though.
I'm just telling you what I've been asked.
When that addition was created, everything was under avenue for the fire trucks to allow, so therefore state statute will apply to it. Cause, you know, they have to have ways to get out, and you can get out safely, so. I understand what they mean by grandfather, but once, once that was established as part of the fire department, you got that, that exit right there for, for fire trucks, state statute supercedes, so.
I understand that too, I just wanted to get the question out, so that way it was asked and answered.
Okay. Did you two have any questions about this?
Yes, because when we moved in, this was not enforced, there was no signage, nothing over there stating that there was any parking prohibitions when we purchased the property. And now we're going to enforce it, which limits our parking and our neighbors' parking.
My biggest thing, I understand you guys have a job, I appreciate everything from it. My biggest thing at work time is, I better work before her, before her, so I have to start her car, back her car up, start my car, back my car, put her car back in the, in the driveway, then I have to go to work. I was parking over here in the gravel lot until me and Abel's son got into it, and I just started parking over there. I can understand you guys have a job, I don't, it doesn't bother me, if I have to park somewhere else, I will, but, um, how many, how many runs do you gotta do a month?
Can't tell you per month, it, it varies.
It varies.
Hundred and seventy to a hundred and ninety a year.
Okay.
So, two hundred hot, two hundred?
Two hundred runs, give or take.
Okay, so.
In the last, I, this not being a hole, it's the last month, I've only seen a, most of the trucks have ever moved out is when they have their meetings. They might use the front door more than they use the back door. Like, I don't mind to park somewhere else, my car, I've moved my car up closer to the edge of my driveway, so they have a straight shot out. I can keep doing that, but my biggest thing is there's a yellow line, I wanna get taken for parking in the yellow line on my driveway where the curb's out. So I keep moving up farther, except for now, except when the trash day, then I'm a little farther back. I mean, if I have to, I can park over, I have no big deal, but then I have visitors come over, they have to park over here and walk. My grandma's handicapped, so she'd have to park, we'd have, my mom have to park over here to get to my house. So it's like, if anybody comes over, they have to park down a street or back there.
And you live on the other side of.
I live right, I live.
Yeah, we live directly back.
Okay, and then Abel's house is?
Abel's house is our next door neighbor.
And then the guy, what's his?
Mike.
Mike, who's got the big truck and the big trailer, he takes up more space than I do, my little car does.
So, and, you know, even the parking by the basketball courts, that is always taken. There's a trailer that's been out there for over a year that has not moved. So nobody else can really park in that area because it's always taken by somebody else's stuff. So, we can't park in the back because that's where the meter is. You don't wanna drive and not uncovering the meter, I'm sure, cause it, I'm sure it would break something because there's not anything to protect it back there. So what is your guys' solution if you're not gonna let us park in front of our home that we purchased?
Good question. It's appropriate to accept public comments since you've opened it up, but.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna make a hard of you guys.
Sure.
At all, can I? I don't, I understand you guys have a job to do, and you guys, you guys be in a hurry, but I, I guess I used to park over there until me and Abel's son got into it, then it was a big deal that my car was parked over there.
Well, Abel doesn't own that.
I understand that.
He had the end over here, so he has no right to tell you.
It was, it was at Son, it was at Son.
Yeah.
Right.
And he's gone.
Yeah, but still, if you look over, there are two vehicles right, I don't know who the trailer is.
Well, you got the fire department, you put it that.
I'm sorry?
The fire department, that parking right there.
From the town though.
We're here.
Town, it's the, right behind the basketball.
Even though the school's split, it, it's not split, it's all ours.
I think even, even part of that asphalt is yours, the town.
We're talking the, I'm talking the gravel, right behind it.
Right.
And I try to slay it open for people to play basketball.
Even though.
We were parked in there, there was a big sign from the school, you couldn't park there, so I could park in there.
They're not supposed, that's not supposed to be there, that's not their property.
Well, that's a discussion that you guys might get with the school because they're saying otherwise, so that's a discussion for other, other times.
In front of the fence is where I would park, and I can't, she came out and told us that you can't park here, it was school property, I was like, okay, I'm not gonna argue.
They pulled it up on the DRS last.
A couple months ago.
Right.
Yeah, I know, and it's just gonna, I, I would recommend maybe giving the superintendent a call, discuss it, so we can get that hashed out and stuff like that, cause they came to me and I, I really, I really don't know where, where it's at and stuff like that. Now, if the town owns that, you can regulate the parking back there, so, I mean, you can do that, and if you wanna make it public parking or restricted parking, you can do that, am I correct in saying that, Mara? So, if we wanna establish that, then we can start addressing the trailer and all that stuff that's there.
And the trailer needs to, doesn't matter where it's at in, in town city, vehicles or trailers, they need to be moved there so often anyway.
Yeah, but, um, it can't be on the road, but I, I won't go into great detail on everything, but I agree with you. And like I said in the, in the past, you know, make sure, if we're gonna go through this, make sure we get everything marked properly, done properly, that way it gives me as law enforcement, backing, if you want to say, law just properly marked and, and sign, signing and stuff like that. Um, it's, it'll, and I'll be honest with you, the only parking I've really been getting on people about parking the wrong way. Um, because that's, that doesn't, that's regulated by signage or markings or anything like that. Um, so, um, that's why I urge, like I said, we're taking, you guys are taking the steps that we need to take to get this corrected, and so I'm just gonna take a little time, and I get that. And, uh, and you folks here, um, I understand your concerns and stuff like that, and it's not like a real good five hundred feet and stuff like that, we'll, we'll, we got really good people up here, and then we'll, we'll come up with a solution, it may not be tonight, but we'll come up with a solution.
I don't mind parking wherever you need to park, I understand you have a job to do, but.
We just need to know where we're.
Well, I wanna be coming out in the morning, oh, my car's been towed because I parked in a spot and I was parked, or I get a ticket, let's.
They gotta post it for thirty days before they can start enforcing that.
Well, six, actually like six days.
Oh, six days.
I'm trying to make their job easier.
Well, and the big push is, we've gotten two newer trucks that are larger than anything we've ever had, back here in the back now, so.
And it's not just behind here, it's out front.
It's out front also.
It's the stop signs, it's down here at this corner, that's, that's extremely bad.
Yeah, back corner enters.
As I came, as I came in tonight, at Walnut and Mill Street, I could barely turn my pickup truck from, from Mill to Walnut, it was that bad, like cars on both sides, and there was just enough to get my pickup truck through there, so. It's not just, it's not just one specific spot that we're picking on, it's just a, it's a conglomeration of things that's trying to be fixed.
I just don't have to park down the road when a train, that's what I'm trying to get.
Right, you do have a driveway, then it will accommodate two vehicles.
We have two in there now.
Right, so, you know, exactly, that, that's, so you, I don't wanna make you walk down the street either, that's, that's, that was not my intent, but we gotta be able to get these things out of here under emergency situations, and we never know when that might be, that's the problem. So, it could be now, it could be six weeks from now, so.
So you said they have to make a motion to accept the amendments?
Yes.
And then make a motion to accept ever, okay, so you need two motions.
Okay. So we need to make a motion.
To accept the amendments.
To, to accept the amendment.
Make a motion to accept the amendment.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, I need to ask.
Make a motion to accept the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Check it.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Alright.
Is it over yet?
Hold on a second, you said six days?
After it's marked.
After it's marked.
After the signs are put in and after it's painted, right?
You have to get it properly marked, whatever signage is gonna be going up, and then published, that, you know, whatever, and then it's sixty days, correct? Sixty days.
That sounds right.
I, that's what number keeps sticking in my head, before you actually write it.
There'll definitely be a, a warning citation.
Yeah, a warning, hey, move your vehicle or move it down here, do this or do that, and then in the meantime, but we'll come up with something, okay?
Hey, we don't wanna put anybody out, that's the thing.
Yeah, we'll come up with something.
Alright, now, visitors forum, does anybody have anything they need to discuss?
Well, actually on that, that's not part of that.
No?
No.
No.
This is actually, yeah.
Or was it this, or were we just discussing?
No.
What is it?
That's a.
Mara told me in January, February, that we can take away the public speaking.
Oh.
And if you wanted to speak, you have to call in and be put on the agenda.
Okay, alright.
Basically, it won't be an open forum anymore.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, I, I meant, I do remember us discussing it, but.
Yeah, let me clarify, there's not necessarily a, a call in to get on the agenda process. It's that your meetings are to be open to the public so that they can observe and record if they choose. There's no requirement in state law that you allow the public to speak at every meeting, unless it is an official public hearing. So it's up to you whether it is on your agenda, whether it's at the beginning of your agenda or at the end of your agenda, so that's something the council can consider.
Okay.
So could we put it to where, if they want to have something to bring up, is it call and be put on the agenda, per se? Just to make it a little easier?
If you're going to allow it, I would keep it on the agenda, just have people sign up when they arrive that evening. Usually you don't want it to ever be content based, or have anyone saying you allowed so and so to speak, but not me, so I would either decide you're going to allow public comment or you are not.
Understand? Any other discussion about that?
Yeah, here's, what's everybody's thoughts on, do you wanna continue to allow them, or do you want to stop allowing them? These.
Alright, I think the.
Well, I'll read. Get it again. Mara, print it off.
It's a, a blog post on the topic that I wrote a few years ago, probably, so I hope you all think through it.
So should we table this, one more?
Absolutely.
Let's table it.
It's okay, I like office.
I'm gonna bring up one other thing, you guys need to, right, your July one, the new decorum law came into effect. So, um, I think you're aware of what, what I'm talking to decorum, and I know it has to be posted, has to be posted about what the decorum is gonna be and, and stuff like that at the meetings. Um, if you want a copy of that, I can print it out, so you guys can see it before the next meeting. Um, it kinda goes hand in hand with what you're talking about right now, and it was created to stop some of the disruption that happens in a lot of meetings across the state, and, uh, helps me as law enforcement too, so. Um, I can pull up that decorum law and send it to you guys, or make it available to you guys to come look at it and maybe talk about it next meeting. I, I'm sure Mara probably agrees with me on this, um, that way we can keep, keep some order, which is not really out of, out of order, but there, it does happen.
Yeah.
We know it does happen, so, um, just keep that in mind, I can get a copy of that and make it available to you guys when, till you can read over it.
We like the healthy discussions, but when something unhealthy comes in, and we, it's just, it's difficult to deal with, yeah.
So we're gonna table this?
Yeah, I think we should, we table this till next month.
There we go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, department reports.
Who seconded that, Steve?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody wanna read these?
Go for it, you're acting president tonight.
I'll read the street department report, well, I can assign it, thank you. I'll take the street department. Okay, completed eight-hour certification class for National Flowplane Insurance Program. Uh, do, and, and there was a question that was presented to me about this. Um, do the gentleman get a raise, any kind of incentive raise for completing this certification?
No.
No? Okay, alright, that is, that is on the.
That would be similar to a, a tech pay, a line item you could add to your salary ordinance, that's something you wanted to consider in the future.
One of those employees that went is the one that's paid out of general and MBH, and there's been very many heated discussions about his pay, and it's just not, I can't afford to give him a raise.
Okay, moving on. Uh, approval for reimbursement for parking when going to that class receives with department reports, do we need to approve that?
Is it in the claims?
It's twenty-five hours.
Approval for the reimbursement, from when they parked and took the test? They don't need, we don't need to approve that, do we?
I see, he, he asked me about it, and I told him he needed to ask you guys and see whether he said yes or no, cause Ronald never asked for reimbursement, he paid for his parking if there was a, something that he wanted to go attend during the work day, he got paid to go attend it, so he paid for his parking.
Okay. Any discussion there? Boss?
I don't know.
No? Okay, let's keep going, tree amigos have removed the large trees that were discussed at last meeting, still working on removing all the stumps. Turned all the bushes at the city building, mowed the playground at the park, put a new landscape fabric down. Have been assisting sewer department with digging up septic, removing tree roots, throwing into the tanks. Need more brackets for signs in town. Need more brackets for signs in town, need new signs for intersection of Lower Street, US twenty seven, quote is with the department report. Customer reached out about removing tree from three oh four Iml. Customer agreed to pay half of tree removal, quote is with department report.
On the signs that.
I was gonna say shame myself.
Yeah. On the signs that Kyle's got in there, it's a total of five fifteen seventy six. But we need. There's ten, two signs and then like ten sections or ten pieces for the, of the hardware. Damn, I see that one.
What is it, five, five fifteen?
Five fifteen, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if I got the cassettes out again.
I just did one, lying out. Damn, I even forgot what I was doing right now.
Do we, do we have the funds for that? Do we want to afford that?
Those are street signs, if they need replaced, then they have to be replaced.
Okay, that's fine. All right, do we need to make a motion?
Make a motion, yeah.
All right, can I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor, yeah, there we go. There you go.
Yeah, they have a, they, they don't explain their motions always.
And then I have the Tree Amigos quote that the customer at three oh four Iml. The total is seventeen thirty, one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, that's removal and stump grinding. And half of that's eight sixty five. Do we still have?
You'd have to use edit because I, with the three that we approved last month, that'll empty out the CCI. Actually, I'm pretty sure.
I mean, if their customers want, or the residents want to pay half, I'm, I'm about it, so.
Yeah, cause if, I mean, it's in the street right way, so it's our responsibility. So if they're gonna pay, offering to pay half now, then we should take it or we'll have to pay for all of it.
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion to accept Tree Amigos quote for four, three oh four Iml Street. Second.
All in favor.
All right.
All right. Sewer report, you want me to read that?
Go for it.
No discharge for month of June, total gallons discharged is three point four seven seven million gallons. Four oh two Iml Street, subject dug up, was removed, everything sealed, backfilled, topsoil seed and straw laid. Also four two Iml Street, removed by Tree Amigos. Subject legs ordered to have on hand from Brenham. New haul to come and fix backhoe issues with its starting, also an operating bucket wants to drop, parking brake sometime fails. Four two Ross Yard Repair, seed and straw leveled up topsoil. Load of scrap metal taken to the recycling center, we got a hundred twenty four dollars back from that. Uh, purchased more chemicals for weeds at lagoons. Dixie Drive Septic Inspection's done. Six oh two Dixie Drive added to dig list for roots. Two oh four North Green, old septic capped, topsoil laid, resident laid their own grass seed and straw. Greens fork alignment out for replacement with passenger rear wheels that blew out on twenty seven. Four oh four Iml Street Subject Dig, remove roots, backfill, will need more topsoil, um, seed and straw. Three oh five Ross Street dug. Roots growing through concrete, whole subject needs replaced, quotes from B and B and WLS attached. McCreary Concrete is the only one to respond to order subject taken from. Did you get that?
Yes, sir.
I got one right here too.
Yep, have one. So basically McCreary's probably gonna be our only. He ain't called in, did he call all of you and had a discussion about these?
Uh, I think so.
Well, he's just talking about where one was, um, wasn't itemized.
Right, the second one I believe is the one he's supposed to talk in that's not itemized.
Okay, all right, yeah, there we go.
Oh, they added to it and so the itemized estimate more than doubled at, from the first estimate.
On B and Bs?
Yeah, B and Bs is four thousand ten dollars, McCreary's is one thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars, half.
What's this, thirty four hundred, that's no brainer to me. And I did, when I talked to Walker on that, the dividing wall between the two separating tanks is literally falling apart, he said. So.
Okay, do we want to vote on that?
On McCreary's?
Yeah, probably need to.
Okay. Uh.
I'll make a motion, we go with McCreary Concrete to replace the subject at three oh five Ross Street.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Moving on, sludge tests completed, certifications come in for DNR floodplain. And we have a list of upcoming septic digs, three oh five Line Street, three oh two Ross, three oh four Ross Street, three oh five Ross Street Inlet Septic Replace. Four oh four Ross Street Inlet, four oh six Ross Street and four oh eight Ross Street Inlet. Two oh five Hartley Inlet, also drainage pipe running through riser will need to be fixed, fixed with work orders. And then six oh two Dixie Drive, septic inspections and locates are continued to be, to being done when the time is available. Things we need to discuss, sewer camera. With as many septics needing dug, this would be a good purchase, save money, not contracting it out every time. Triax load, topsoil for sewer projects, two oh five Ross Septic Replace. An additional dollar raise for being floodplain certified. Any, uh, comment? Like about the sewer camera? Didn't we talk about that before?
We have, we've talked about it before, but we've never seen any quotes on it, I don't believe.
Okay, all right. I think when I talked to him, that's what I said, we do.
Yeah, well, that's where we need to start.
Okay, so we'll leave that till then, all right? What's next? Somebody want to read the water department?
What about the topsoil?
Do we need to load some of the topsoil? Isn't that something we would just normally purchase?
I would think they would just go ahead and do it, cause that's something they kind of need to do their job, so.
Right, exactly, so I don't think we would need to approve that.
Mara, quick question on the sewer department, they're wanting a load of topsoil to fix the yards of work rate and dig. We don't have to vote on that since it's something.
If it's within their budget.
To do, I mean, to replace what they pour up per se.
Yeah, if it's already within their budget, it would be a pretty huge, their funds. You'll, you'll get a claim.
Like, in our code book, anything over two hundred dollars is supposed to get quotes and be voted on by council. Unless it is already.
I do not look at the code book right now.
Unless it's already laid out in the code book, like the utility bills, the chemicals that they need, stuff that, then they don't have to ask. They don't have to get quotes and ask for a vote.
Well, since it's over two hundred dollars, I suppose you at least need a verbal vote approved of that for them.
Didn't they just get a load of topsoil?
No, they did not.
No, that was mulch, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, they got, they're, I got a, a bill in there for topsoil too, that was for the sewer department.
Where?
That place.
Does they get it on our, one of ours, or did they have it some delivered?
Uh, do they? I'll tell you. I don't want to answer and, and be wrong and tell you the wrong thing, cause I just paid it the other day.
While she's looking for that. I am unclear on these quotes with McCreary, B and B and Web. It sounds like B and B and Web are bidding the actual labor and McCreary's only the product.
I believe McCreary's.
There's no white item for labor.
Well, and in some case, uh.
I didn't know McCreary, I don't think he installs.
I think he, he said he wouldn't be, excuse me?
I don't, I, I don't, I'm a query, I've heard of them before, I don't believe they install, they just burn it to the tank.
Yeah, well, deliver item to site for storage.
Do they have restrooms?
Uh, some, Indiana somewhere, but yeah, I didn't.
But anyway, they, they did tell us that if they could use our pipe, then they wouldn't have to purchase any charges for it.
So I think you guys are gonna, will be able to put that in, cause they'll have to dig the old one out, the way I understood it when he called me. So.
Yeah, that's, that sounds right.
Correct. They got four cubic yards in June.
So that was probably hard to chop.
Yeah, whatever they had done at the sewer, or the lagoons or whatever that they had topsoil for.
How much was that?
Uh, one, what did I, one forty nine thirty two.
Okay.
For four cubic yards.
Okay.
Is that what you said it stood for?
Okay, we're good.
I think a triaxal load and they can use it for all this other stuff, in my opinion, but.
All right. Somebody want to read?
The water.
The water department's report?
Do we need to vote on that topsoil real quick?
Do it?
No, if it's over, how much are they getting?
I would say triaxal loads, what?
Twenty.
Twenty ton.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I mean, they'll be able to keep, use that for quite a while.
Right.
But we don't actually have a quote to vote on.
I make a motion to really, to get a twenty tons of topsoil.
It's thirty, thirty seven, thirty eight per cubic yard. Cubic, yeah, CY is cubic yard, yeah.
Lori made a motion.
And you said?
I made a motion.
Motion, and we seconded it, did we? You want to second it?
Be approximately only seven hundred and forty six dollars. What's that coming out of?
Would not be the sewer though, cause it's replacing all the sewer where they dig.
Septic tanks?
Where they're digging for the septics.
Okay.
So you don't have an exact quote that would put a cap on it, say that you're approving up to seven hundred fifty dollars or something?
Okay, topsoil, seven hundred fifty, go, ask for the motion.
We got a motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Who motioned it? I can't motion, okay. I thought you was going by what I said and went, no, can't do that.
Uh, the water department, uh, he's done monthly testing, the backwash twenty six thousand gallons. Uh, twelve eight one one tickets, testing site paperwork found and changes made to be accurate. All valves on Main Street, North Street, found and dug up, numbered as well. Hydrants from Main and North of Main have been flushed and second flow test done. Five oh eight Davis, service leak repaired. Uh, meter fit, meter pit fixed at four oh six Davis, lead survey and water loss audit has been worked on. Prep annual samples coming up in the next month or so. Um, still hydrant flushing every Wednesday until it's done, no flushing July third. Um, they're running valve exerciser again, which we had discussed that short, there around when we were doing the, um, water project.
And we got quotes.
Yeah, we got quotes tonight. And then valve numbering and bringing to correct height. And then finish on the south end of town, start turning valves after numbering is done. On the, did everybody get a copy of the valve exerciser quote?
Can you have one of those, Drew?
Mm-hmm.
I got one.
Um, he's got one called the hydrant buddy exerciser and gate valve, uh, comes with a toolbox. Um, and everything needed to do, all the valves and hydrants for five thousand nine hundred and forty five. Uh, a portable battery powered valve exerciser, uh, six thousand three hundred and fifty one. And then a Wheeler, Wheeler Rex, believe it was a portable valve exerciser with forward counter. I think this was the one that Chase had quoted also, and that's nine thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars. Uh, that's why I think it was too, I think it was one of the ones like mounted on the back of the truck or was on a trailer or something, nonsense.
I was thinking it was on a trailer.
Do you know about either one of them? Have you ever seen any of them?
But exercisers are pretty handy because opening and closing a gate valve can be, based on the size of the valve, could be twenty some odd turns. So imagine the guy manually working a T wrench.
We had some down work, it took a half an hour to shut the gate valve.
So, do we want to? I'm sorry, please don't you run.
No, go ahead, yeah. Do we, do we want to? Do? I mean, what does everybody, how does everybody feel about this?
I mean, we definitely need one.
Okay.
And since this is waterage.
Trying to get that little, it's like, please stop.
Yeah, the water's the lowest of the two and it just keeps getting lower.
Okay, so we're out with the one that's ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, no.
Um.
We shouldn't have any old valves that haven't been turned, correct?
I would think not.
We should have all new, every valve should be new in the ground.
Right, yeah.
What's everybody's flavor there?
Don't I talk like once?
Yeah.
I'm not saying nothing.
I turned it over, that's my fault.
Hmm?
I turned it over, that's my fault.
Well, how are they opening valves now?
They put a T wrench, which is a bar with a, an adapter on it that fits over the nut down in the ground about five feet. It's got a key handle on it, it's about this big and you manually have to turn that one.
Go ahead.
It's too much manual labor for them.
Yeah. They're not thirty, they're not thirty yet, they can do that.
You know the younger generation.
Well, I've never done this, so I can't really make.
And if here's this hydrant buddy exerciser, it's a battery powered one also. But, I mean, we, we can table it.
Let's table it.
Let's table it.
Yeah, let's table it.
It, it's.
Here, you want to go over yours?
Yeah, it's, it's, I promise you it's short sweet. Uh, police services, uh, the monthly thing for dispatch is attached. Uh, we drew two cases last month, we got four active cases right now, I just got another case that's gonna be time consuming. Uh, in total for nineteen, training did twelve hours K nine, Terrell attended a forty hour. Uh, in total for nineteen, training, did twelve hours K nine, trail attended a forty-hour SRO advanced course. Uh, defensive tactics is coming up in August and mandate training's been moved to the end of July. Vehicles, both vehicles are due for oil changes, which, that money that you guys approved.
The boys are done, right?
Yeah, the boy, that's why I'm gonna buy a surplus. So I'll be back here with, with the filters and everything I need, it's gonna stay back here and then they'll go back there and change it and be done with it, so. Um, and shouldn't have to dip into my maintenance budget as much, so my estimate should cover me for about a year and a half. So. Um, oh. Uh, I need to look into replacing the lights on the truck. I've got two of my front grille lights are starting to go out, which I think are covered by warranty, so I'm looking into that, so it may not be anything but probably cost of, uh, installing them, which will be minimal. Um, and then the running board light on the one side, all the reds are starting to go out, which may be covered under warranty, I gotta check on it, I'm still waiting on the phone call back. Um, if not. Probably looking around. I don't know, probably about two, three hundred bucks to replace that, that's probably gonna include labor. Um, but if it comes to that, I'll find ways to do it without hitting my budget, so, I'm just letting you guys know, that's come, that's what I'm looking into. Uh, and other categories, uh, purchased MO that was approved last meeting. Uh, you guys already discussed the, I call it an MOU, but the grant money stuff. And I applied for the Drug Free Wing County Partnership Grant for about four thousand, so, and that's it for me.
Okay, then.
Wes, do you have anything?
Negative. I'm from the fire department.
Okay. Department reports. Um, approval claims and payments.
You gonna skip over the other one there?
Oh, that was the number four.
Yeah, well, I don't have to, but.
I think, I think there's one, she wants to say.
I think you got one that is here to say something.
You have something to say?
Do you want me to go over there? You want me to go over there?
No.
Okay. So, I'm on here on behalf of Fountain City Forward, you know that, probably. Um, hopefully, we're looking at August third, I want to have a town block party, you guys. I have discussed it with the rec association and the lands club, and we're getting something planned out. I know I need to, um, reserve the park shelter. Um, so then that, reserving the shelter, if I understand, gets with me the park, correct? I mean, basically for everybody, for the town.
One thing.
Okay, so what the, the block party is, is we're, it's free, too cheap. Getting the town together, we're gonna call it like hashtag it takes a village, you know, we're trying to get everybody together. So many people in the town don't know each other anymore, there's new people, we wanna get the kids, we wanna have some stuff for the kids, we're gonna have, lands club's gonna do some food. Um, we're gonna touch a truck, maybe some face paintings, some blowups, we wanna ham it in the park so they can use the equipment. Um, the other thing we are gonna do, and rec is gonna let me use, the, um, South Diamond. Um, we're hoping for a cornhole tournament, but then we want to have a movie that night. We are still trying to find out, we think we have to, there'll be some fees that we have to pay for the rights to the movie. Um, we had heard that we might not have two of them we're charging, 'cause we're not, but we have sense about that separate, so, but we will get that taken care of.
ID tech would definitely have information on that, 'cause.
Who was?
ID tech, when I went to school there, they would have their week, student week, and one of the nights was movie night, and they'd have an outside movie, so.
We really wanna do that, so, um, I offered, um. Well, the, like I said, lands club will do some food. Rec is busy, so they're not gonna sell, I thought maybe they might sell concessions for, um, the movie, 'cause I thought that'd be cool, popcorn, candy, hey, why not? Um, they're busy, and that's fine. Um, but touch a truck, we've got a few people are gonna bring, like, our, uh.
Ambulance.
Not to put you on the spot, Wes, but are we doing a truck? We've got a few things in the mind. So, um, but we're looking at August third, um, because that's before school. I know people have approached me, they're like, that's Pardo's thing on the third, there might be something else on the third, but I'm like, you know what, there's enough people in this. This is, this is for Fountain City, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, I'm not moving my date, I'm just not, unless somebody's got the shelter reserved, and I guess then we may.
I'm pretty sure that there's no reservations in August, I have my calendars in my office, I'll double check when the meeting's over, but I'm almost positive, I haven't even wrote any numbers in the August month yet for reservations, so. And then, if you wanna reserve all three of them, then that'll cut anybody else out from being able to reserve a shelter on the third, but if you only reserve one.
Then somebody else.
Somebody else can reserve one of the other two.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. So, that's pretty much it, I just kinda wanted to know, I will need to. Everybody's with you, yeah. 'Cause, I mean, we had some people, well, the lands club at first thought we might do it, like, in the field instead of doing it in the park because of crossing twenty-seven. But they, it's already reserved, and, you know, I grew up crossing twenty-seven, so I'm okay with it. I'm just.
Yeah, I used to get in trouble for it.
You just, it looked both ways, I just don't, I know that we have a lot of traffic coming in, but I think it's gonna be okay, so, we're, we're gonna coordinate that, okay?
Okay.
Wes, you got a question?
You have a question, what does it cost to reserve the shelters at the park?
Twenty-five dollars.
Why don't the town donate that for that up there? I'm making a, I'm making a. Why don't they donate the, the shelter rental?
You know, we don't have a whole lot that goes into the general fund.
It's twenty-five dollars.
Goes into the general fund.
It's twenty-five dollars. It's, it's.
I'm lost, all the other fees and stuff that we have are water or sewer, there's not a whole lot of money that the general fund makes. Uh?
Do you know what's in my donation?
No, without doing the calculations, I don't.
Is it, is it twenty-five per shelter?
Oh.
I'll pay it.
You guys are gonna make me cry.
And you're gonna cry.
You're gonna make me cry.
Try it, can you make the conversation, Blue said he would.
There you go.
You guys. You're very, I swear.
Send you a bill or something.
Okay, reserve it. I'll have our secretary get you a receipt.
Send him an invoice, there you go.
Yes, invoice.
Okay. Yep, I think they were.
Yeah, one more question, this isn't about parking. What about sidewalks, I know I talked to you, Shane, the sidewalks in front of the house, have you heard anything about that? I talked to him, it's like months ago about it.
That's part of the tree money that Craig.
The CCI.
Yeah, so that's probably gonna have to wait until next year, I would say, when we get more CCI money. I know it, it's like we keep putting them off, keep putting them off. But the last time we done, we had, uh, there were ten or twelve of us that volunteered our time, done. So.
We'll figure it out. It goes back, I know those kids riding the pipe over there had a hard time with the, they cut the tree down this.
Yeah. Fireworks are the July thirteenth, if anybody didn't know.
There's something else I was gonna. Anybody else?
Do you remember what it was, little man?
Nope, sure don't.
We talked about.
Okay. Approval of claims and payments, can we?
I'm making approv, I'm making a motion to approve claims and payments.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.